I call the City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee, May 22nd, 2025 Hybrid Meeting to Order at 1:02 PM. For an equitable experience, please announce your name before commenting. This helps the blind, visually impaired, and those online know who's speaking when speakers' pictures or names do not appear. We'll begin with roll call, and I encourage each member to provide a self-description. I'll go ahead and go first. My name is Liz Woodfin. I'm a blond-haired, blue-eyed, white woman, and I am Chair. And I'm wearing a peach-colored sweater and a hound's-tooth blazer.
What? So, I am Stephanie Edsman in Council Chambers. I have long, brown, curly hair, a white woman with brown eyes, and I'm wearing a white shirt and a beige sweater vest.
And I'm Ian Isaacson here in Council Chambers, a white male, green jacket and a beard.
For those online.
Hi, this is Carl, online today from my home, wearing a black-and-white checked shirt and glasses and a beard and mustache.
This is Whitney Bennett, she/her. I'm coming in online. I have blond hair, like, blue eyes and, well, a white woman. I'm wearing a aqua fleece.
I'm... Sorry, go ahead.
Sure. This is Liz Death Martin. I'm attending online today. I'm a white woman with, excuse me, wet, dark hair and a green-colored shirt. I go by she/her. And off to you, Erin.
This is Erin Rivers. I'm attending online today. I'm wearing black headphones and a green fleece, and I am a male and use he/him pronouns.
Uh, this is... Do you want to go? Okay, I'll just go. This is Andrew Caruana. I'm attending online because I'm feeling very under the weather again. Uh, so I'll probably keep my camera off. But in case you're curious, I'm a white male with curly, wavy blond hair, uh, brown-framed glasses and a black shirt.
Yeah, everybody, this is Derek Hoppower, he/him pronouns, Vice Chair of Quebec, uh, here in Council Chambers, uh, wearing a gray jacket and a white shirt. Thanks, everyone.
All right, everyone online, get a chance to introduce themselves. Amanda?
I'm Amanda Hamer. I am online with a blurred background. I'm wearing black-rimmed reading glasses, and I am a white woman who goes by she/her pronouns. And I am currently, uh, experiencing wavy brunette hair, I would say. I don't know, hard to say, light brown. It changes.
Anybody else online? Can you get everyone? All right, let's go ahead and move on to the, um, City of Bend land acknowledgement. Do I have a volunteer to read?
Hold on, dear. That's not a quiet day today. Read the land skills. "We would like to acknowledge that the beautiful land known as Bend, Oregon, north to the Columbia River is the original homestead of the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. The Confederated Tribes ceded this land to the treaty, in the Treaty of 1855, while retaining regular and customary hunting, fishing, and gathering rights. The Wano-Lama, Warm Springs, Wasco, and Northern Paiute people inhabited this area in certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It is also important to note that the Klamath Trail ran north through this region to the great Salilo Falls trading grounds. This trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land. It is our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land."
Thank you, Stephanie. All right, let's go ahead and move on to approval of the April 2024... Sorry, April 24th, 2025 draft minutes. Um, are there any corrections to those minutes? Do I have a motion to approve April 24th, 2025 minutes?
Uh, Andrew Caruana speaking on Zoom. Uh, I'll motion to approve the minutes.
This is Derek, I'll second.
Great. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Looks like we have a unanimous approval of, um, April 24th minutes.
Amanda?
No, dude, I was just raising my hand in agreement, sorry.
It was after the fact, I'm sorry.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, we'll go ahead and move to public comment. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak?
There's no one online? This is Lisa.
No one in the lobby? Okay. All right, well, let's go ahead and move on to the Language Accessibility Update. Lindsay, and I apologize, I will, uh, say your last name wrong. So when you introduce yourself, please.
Of course, my pleasure. It's a good Polish name. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, I am Lindsay Winglowski. Uh, I use she and they pronouns. I'm an Equity Management Analyst for the City of Bend, and I'm also acting in the capacity of, uh, Language Access Program Coordinator for the City of Bend, which is what brings me in front of you today. For those of you online, I am a tall person with a brunette pixie cut and long earrings and tattoos and a very vibrant dress on today.
It's amazing dress, by the way. It's got purses on it, and it's fabulous.
Let the record show. Thank you. Um, and again, I'm just very grateful for the opportunity to give you an update because part of my work over the last year now has been conducting a programmatic refresh of how the city approaches language access. And before we jump into that conversation, which I hope will indeed be a conversation, please don't feel like you need to hold your questions until the end. I would much rather you jump in and we just have that back and forth in real time, uh, to give you any clarification or elaboration you might need. Before we jump into that, I just want to acknowledge that you each bring a constellation of relationships and expertise as experience and your family and, and general histories to conversations like these. And I'm really looking forward to, um, how our dialogue today can enrich the work that we're doing at the city. So with that, um, and thank you, Cassandra, for moving my slides forward for me. I appreciate it. We can jump in. Um, so my hope for today, and this is just by way of orientation, we're going to focus on kind of four key questions together. The first one is really just a way for us to set out a foundation for ourselves about what we mean when we talk about language access, um, language assistance, and any of those key terms, and really what the city's responsibility is for providing language assistance to our community, uh, as well as our why for doing this work. And it's both a moral why as well as a, a legal one, a legal obligation. Then we'll get into a little bit of an overview of what our program looks like and specifically thinking about what does it look like for community? Because that's really the folks that we want to be using and, and feeling empowered by this program. We'll then kind of pivot pretty naturally into what we hope community members know about this program. Um, and perhaps you'll identify opportunities that align with work that you're doing as a body here, but also in your roles out in community to continue helping us spread the word about these resources that are available because they are free for community to use and access, and we sure hope they do. Uh, and then finally, I would just really value just a conversation with you all at the end to learn from you and discuss how you see yourselves potentially helping, again, rolling out this communication about the program, um, in our community. Uh, but before we do all of that, I want to ask how you see yourselves connecting to this topic. So, uh, next slide, please. What I'd like you to think about for a moment, and you can just do this, in the silence of your heart, and if you feel like you want to share it out loud, by all means. But I want you to think about, uh, what languages you grew up around, right? What was the water in which you swam? Maybe in your homes, your friends' homes, out in community in different spaces, um, in churches or at ballgames, or wherever you, you found yourself. Or maybe it was a, a language you wanted to learn or you did learn at school. But what were those languages for you? And I bring this up as our starting point together because I think it's really important for us to reflect on what those linguistic tools were, and if we felt them in our own lives to be bridges or barriers, because that's a theme that we're going to come back to a lot today. And yeah, I just, I'm curious to hear what your stories are. So if anyone feels comfortable sharing, you're welcome to. But I'm otherwise happy to start. I'll start, I'll, I'll just warm it up. So, um, I, surprisingly, for someone who came from a small cow town, uh, in New England, um, I grew up hearing a lot of languages, but the one that stands out the most to me is German because my oma spoke German, and she came, uh, to the United States fleeing the wreckage of World War II. And she was, she is, long-lived, wonderful lady, smart as a whip. But all her life, despite being incredibly proficient in her chosen field, language was a barrier for her because she spoke English with a German accent. And I remember, like, hearing that and having that be part of our family lore, that as much as there was pride in that language from another place, there was also embarrassment. And it's something that I bring with me to this work. And when I think about this question as well, I also think about the languages I didn't grow up hearing. And specifically, that relates to my last name, which should be pronounced Venglovsky, and make me sound kind of like a Bond villain. But it doesn't because my side of the family left that language when they stepped off the boat in Ellis Island. And thankfully, they kept the kebab and the pierogies, but not the language, right? And that has become for me a barrier to understanding that part of my history. So, bridge and barrier kind of goes both ways. But you've heard enough about me, and this is not a TED Talk. So I'd love to hear from you all what languages stand out to you, um, in your stories. Yeah.
So for me, um, I was fortunate to, um, host several exchange students, um, as a youth. And so I am, and I've, um, spent two consecutive summers in Germany. So, German is also one. Um, I learned French and, um, uh, hosted other exchange students from other parts of the world, uh, Holland, Norway, Japanese, Japan. Um, my, my kiddo is actually in Japan right now, learning Japanese. So, language is, um, very important to me, and, um, I really appreciate that you're here sharing with us, how we are making language more accessible to our community and, um, being more inclusive. Thanks.
This is Whitney, online. And for me, in the house, language is English. And with a middle name of Janus, there was a couple Polish words running around as well. But honestly, um, the language, I think that I was surrounded outside of my house by a lot of Spanish-speaking, and it, and it never was seen as a barrier to me, but more as a motivation factor of, this is a language I want to speak. And so having Spanish being spoken around me from whether it's being in a community that I lived in, in the schools that I was in, and the places I would travel to, and then eventually go and live in, um, it, it became a language that I wanted to be able to connect with, so I, I could communicate in that, like, conscious, kind of culturally aware way. And it was a very hard thing, but it was a very motivating thing to be surrounded by it. So, um, that's kind of my, my experience with language and my passion too of just the Spanish language being a beautiful language to study at all times.
Thank you. Maybe one or two more.
Yeah, this is Derek. I, when I did my, uh, graduate school work in Southern Belize, I had to learn the Mopan Mayan language, um, at about six months. And it's not a written language, so it was all just through experience to be able to work with their community and exchange ideas and document, um, their agricultural techniques. And so that was a, a challenge being in the community. Fortunately, some of them, you know, a lot of them spoke English, but, um, the elders, I had to really learn that language quickly to be able to communicate.
Well, I, um, sorry. I, this is Stephanie. I grew up in a very rural, um, farming community in Northern California. Um, and so our population was pretty evenly mixed, uh, Caucasian English speakers and Hispanic, Spanish speakers. And so, um, I took, uh, five years of Spanish. And at one time, until I moved to Oregon, I was pretty fluent in speaking and reading the language, but not necessarily writing it. And then I moved up to Portland, and I kind of lost all of it. Um, but my family are all Italian immigrants. And so we, I grew up, um, hearing a lot of the Italian language, but not, but every generation, you know, you lose some of it. And so like, my great-grandmother didn't speak a word of English, and so I couldn't communicate with her at all. And then, um, and then now, it's like I... Manja, that's the extent of my Italian knowledge. And so, you know, I, I view, I, you know, being with the, at one point, a fluent Spanish speaker, and then losing it, I feel like it's a barrier again. And then, of course, I'd love to learn Italian someday, but I, I need to conquer Spanish first.
Well, thank you to everyone who shared their story about language. I really appreciated the opportunity to learn a little more about you and how you see yourselves with the work. And if I didn't, um, didn't hear from you, I, um, hope it's just kind of lit that little fire about like how you see yourself connecting to this or how you could imagine yourself in the spaces that we'll be, uh, moving through together today. So, um, with that, please feel free to advance the slide. As I mentioned, we're going to start with that kind of common foundation. And if you have a lot or a little of experience with language access, um, you're all welcome here, but we'll head to the next slide, and we'll just start a little bit with that, um, kind of level setting for our conversation today. So, um, I've been using that bridge and barrier metaphor a, a bunch already. And, um, that's because we recognize at the city that language can be either a bridge or a barrier, but ideally a bridge to vital information. And what we mean by vital information is information that relates to what you, uh, might be reading or seeing here, that the, the nature of things that dramatically affect people's lives, right? Their ability to access important benefits, exercise and understand their rights, and comply with their responsibilities. And if you think about the scope of work, um, and the core services the city provides, right? We're talking about some significant and essential, um, pieces of, of folks' lives, right? Their ability to move through, uh, move through space, their ability to understand, like, their Miranda rights, to know whether the water is clean enough to drink, right? And those are just a few. So this is really near and dear to our hearts in terms of making sure that that critical information about the programs and services we provide is available to folks in their primary language. The work, um, sits on the legal bedrock of the Civil Rights Act, so Title VI specifically. When we run and do staff training, um, on language access, I will often mention, um, a little bit of what would fall into the ADA and Title II. Um, but for the purposes of our conversation today, we'll be sp- speaking about spoken and written language as opposed to signed language. But know that staff are familiar with both processes as they relate to those different buckets of law. But basically, we're required, because we receive federal funding, to provide meaningful access to people with limited English proficiency. And I mentioned at the start that there are a couple of key terms there. So if you are already a language access pro, uh, please forgive me as I just give a little bit of context. But when we say meaningful access, what we mean is access to information in a language other than English that is accurate, that is timely. That can vary depending on the context, right? What's timely for fire or police might be different than what is timely for, like, our long-range planning teams. And most importantly, that is free to community, right? So that they don't feel, no one feels like they have to bring someone to function as a companion interpreter, but know that there are professional interpreters available to support them in their conversations with the city. And then when we talk about language assistance, which is what helps ensure that language accessibility, we're talking about different tools in our toolkit. So one is translation. That's when you move from one written language to another. And then the other tool, primary tool, is interpretation, which is when you're moving from a spoken or signed language into another spoken or signed language. Uh, there's kind of a middle part of that Venn diagram that we'll get to in a bit, but just know that those are our primary tools. So that's kind of the, the basis, right? The bedrock of our terms that we'll be using today. But if you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt me. But otherwise, yeah, go for it.
Question. And maybe you'll, you'll touch on this later, and I'm happy to wait. But, um, my question is, um, when we're looking at language access, are, how are we accounting, like, um, the example of, um, vice chairs, uh, going to Belize and, uh, speaking a, a, a language that isn't written? And that you learn mostly by, um, hearing and speaking it? Several, um, dialects of, uh, Spanish and Latin America are very different from each other, and, um, they describe things differently. Is there an account for, um, for that within the system of that we're, um, translating and interpreting?
Yes, that's a fabulous question. And I'm really torn on whether to answer it now or in a little bit, but like, let's, let's do it now, um, and I'll reference back to it. So, uh, there are a few ways to address those, um, challenges and opportunities, right? Or like the, the puzzles of language. And so one way is really just thinking about, um, the interpretation providers that we use, making sure that they understand our cultural context here in Central Oregon. Specifically, what are those dialects from, uh, Latin and Central America that we understand to be most prevalent in, in our region? What, based on qualitative, um, data that we collect and, and gather from and with community, what do we know about languages that are not appearing in, say, federal data sets related to limited English proficiency? And so we can get into more of that in a bit. But really, the opportunity then, when looking at providers that the city contracts with, is to say, like, how do you explore these questions? How are you training your, your staff to be able to use language that is accessible across dialects? Or to respond when you notice that maybe a message is not moving as smoothly as anticipated from that interpretation perspective? How do you adjust? So there are a number of, of pieces there. And some of those providers, those interpretation providers, also have, you know, in their portfolio, you know, not just a hundred of the most widely seen, the languages of greatest profusion is a term that's used, widely-used languages, but also like maybe 350 total languages, which include those of lesser profusion, which can include some of the oral, um, like oral-only languages or indigenous languages from various parts of the world. So that's part of it. And if I haven't fully answered your question, uh, let me know when we get into kind of our qualitative assessment in a little bit, and I'll happily revisit. This was also a great opportunity to just, one more thing before we switch slides, I'm so sorry, is to just call out what we mean by limited English proficiency. So, folks with limited English proficiency are folks who have a primary language, use a primary language other than English, and who have a limited ability to read, speak, write, or otherwise understand English. So those are the folks that we're really considering as we refresh this program and as we're talking today. It is not folks like my oma who speaks German and English fluently, right? Like, oma hess, she's good without this language access program. But again, it's thinking about our LEP population. So, thank you. Next slide, please. Um, and again, love, loving the questions, so thank you for those. I just wanted to call out, because we've talked about, you know, the Civil Rights Act, really though, language assistance, when we think about it as an organization, it's really deeply aligned with customer service. This is, you know, one of our, it's in our DNA as a, a public service, um, institution. Um, and we recognize that a significant part of our service delivery comes down to language. So, um, when we did a organization-wide needs assessment last year, which we'll talk about more in a bit, we heard throughout the organization, whether it was our hyper internal departments like Fleet or our hyper external departments like Community and Economic Development, that strong commitment to making sure that we were meeting our customers where they needed to be met, and that we were looking at innovative ways to make those connections and build those bridges, which was really encouraging to hear and then build on that momentum throughout the past year. Next slide. Thank you. So what does our program look like? At its core, there are four kind of key components. You can see them here. Each one builds on the other, and this represents, again, that growth and development over the last year, um, starting with a administrative policy that we put in place in the spring of 2024, and then moving in spring and summer into that org-wide needs assessment I mentioned, which both of those, one, I think, communicate our commitment to this work and to that continuous iteration and improvement on behalf of and with community. But also kind of emphasize where we're going with our plan and our program itself. So the plan is an actual document that informs our program. But a number of these documents you can find on our website, which we'll get into as well, just so you know where to go or where to, um, direct community to, um, as you'd like. So if, speaking of going and directing, if we could advance the slide one, that would be wonderful. So on the left is just a quick screenshot of that language access page. This is publicly available. It's been translated into Spanish, um, and it includes all of those key concepts about what language access at the city, um, entails, which we'll get into in a little bit as well. It includes a Spanish-language copy of the policy as a reference, not as a legal document, but there for folks to look at and peruse. It includes a feedback form that community members can edit and let us know how their experience has been. They can include as much or as little information as they'd like if they would like to preserve their anonymity when providing feedback. But this will help us, now that we have kind of refreshed this program, um, in the second iteration, to really know what we should start prioritizing and working on as we continue improving moving forward. And there's also the full organizational assessment if folks are interested in some light beach reading. On the right, there's a sample of one of the resources that we've been rolling out to front-facing staff, um, in our trainings. If you're not familiar with it, this is what's called an I-Speak card, and it's ba- basically a sheet, standard sheet, that has a number of, again, those languages of greater diffusion, so more common languages, um, that folks can identify and say, ah, I speak, I speak Spanish, and they can point. And that will help staff connect them with the appropriate interpreter. So we've got a number of different resources that we're putting visibly in public spaces, so community members are also seeing that these resources are available and that we have the tools to connect them, um, with language assistance as appropriate. All right, so I wanted to pause and just dive a little bit more into the question about how have we determined our needs? And how are we considering, um, the rich linguistic landscape that we have in Central Oregon? As you may already, already know or, or guess. So, next slide, please. When we did our needs assessment last year, this was really our core question. And then undergirding that, we thought about what are those activities and services and programs that we provide, which, some of which I mentioned earlier. But we also asked ourselves, what languages are present in our community? What does the data tell us? But what also are we observing in our interactions with the general public in our various parts of our organization? And how frequently are we in different places interacting with the public in general? Is it quarterly with an open house? Is it literally every hour responding to calls for service? Is it somewhere in between? But just trying to get a sense, again, of our full organizational landscape, but also the language, the language landscape of our community. So I wanted to pause and ask... So I wanted to pause and ask, and you can feel free to throw out a number. Guests are completely free. How many languages do you think, and it can be an approximation, how many languages do you think are present in our community?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
I was gonna say six.
Forty.
Did I hear forty?
Yeah.
Forty-three.
Forty-three. I will say, having asked this question several times over the last year to different audiences, this is the group that has the widest range of answers and is also the highest, which I think is really, really cool. So the answer, and if we're playing by price is right rules, I believe, Liz, you would be winning, is there are over thirty languages in our community, based on what we, we know from both federal data, which, oh, if you could please advance the slide, that'd be super. Thank you so much. Federal data, ACS stands for American Community Survey Data, which is put out from the Census Bureau. But we also know this from school district data and we know this from conversations with community members and community-based organizations. And if you are a lover of languages, which I know from listening to you share your stories earlier, some of you are, you can see that for some of these linguistic groupings with the asterisks, right? Where there isn't necessarily a distinguishing categorization besides other Indo-European languages, you know how wide that umbrella is. So there's tremendous diversity and variety here in our community, which is, I think, really, really cool and very thought-provoking, for sure. Which brings me, oh, I see a hand up.
This is, this is Aaron online. I just was kind of wondering, does this grouping seem kind of like prejudiced to you or fair? I mean, I just saw the Chinese one of Mandarin and Cantonese and then the lower right corner. Yeah, I know it's probably like census data, but is that sort of like heavy-handed?
So it is census data and this reflects the current categorization that the Census Bureau uses for language. These categories, as, as, as do other census categories, tend to change over time. So I would just say, yes, those, this is the current categorization of it. And I imagine that it will continue to evolve with time.
Okay, thanks. This, first time I've seen it.
Yeah, yeah. That's a great question. I appreciate it. Okay. All right. Thank you. So some other things and really some important things that community members should know. And before we get into this piece, I just want to emphasize again that really the most important thing that I hope community members learn and know about language assistance is that it is, one, their right to access, like to have an interpreter if they need one, again, for accessing that vital information. And that, that service is free to them. And I mentioned that here, just because that's often a common misconception around language access. And we certainly don't want costs to become an additional barrier when language is already functioning as a barrier rather than a bridge. So, but one thing I did want to note, next slide, please, is it is important to just underscore what the city's obligation is, especially thinking about document translation, so that we have expectations properly calibrated. So we just were talking about how many languages are present in community, which is over thirty. And sometimes folks hear that and go, oh, so you have, you have to have thirty different versions of the same document ready to go, translated into each of those languages. And that's actually not the case. We follow the industry standard in terms of what, what languages we should be proactively considering for document translation. That's governed by the Department of Justice's language, language guidance, LEP guidance. And right now, there's one language, based on our current population data, that rises to that level, where departments are thinking about how are we planning to translate key documents? How are we planning to get information into this additional language ahead of time? Anyone want to guess what that language is for Bend? Yeah, it's Spanish, correct. So right now, that is the one language for us in our, our municipal context that rises to that federal threshold. In the future, there may be more. We'll see as we conduct additional organizational needs assessments in the years to come. But it's important, I think, just to note that because it helps, again, kind of set an understanding of what the process is or what, what can be expected, at least as far as those printed documents or digital documents are concerned.
Right, the undertaking.
It is. It's definitely an iterative process and really thinking about how do we prioritize and plan out some of those translation projects, depending on if the document maybe hasn't been translated before, but we'll get into that too in a minute because every department context is a little different, for sure. So you might be thinking, well, yeah, if someone walks in and their, their primary language is Ukrainian and not Spanish or English, how do we bridge that gap for them? When they have maybe a, a key document that is not in their primary language? And the answer, to go back to the Venn diagram metaphor from earlier, is, oh, oh, please, you can go to that slide. This is perfect. Thank you so much. That answer is oral translation. So if translation is about written documents, right, written to written, and interpretation is about spoken or signed, just spoken or signed language, the middle part of that Venn diagram is oral translation, which is when you take a written document and you either read or sign it into a second language. And so that's how we are prepared to move that vital information into those additional languages that we know are present in our community. And by we, again, thinking about, you know, who should be offering this, this bridge? Who should be doing that interpretive work? We work with interpretation providers to do that. It's not on city staff unless they have demonstrated that they are able to do that work in that language. Just because we want to make sure, again, those translations are meaningful in that they are accurate and timely and they're going to get our community members the information they need. Any questions on this?
I have a question.
Sure.
This is Ian. So are you relying on folks to reach out to you ahead of an open house? For, for example, if they need Ukrainian translation? Or does the city have, you know, translators for every language available? You know, like on-call type situation? Like, how, how does that work?
Great question. So I would say we have like taglines at the bottom of most city documents that let folks know, like, who to reach out to, to make a request. And ideally, we want those requests ahead of time. Internally, when we do training on language access, we talk about, like, if you're planning an open house event, for example, we encourage those project managers and the staff who are helping with that planning process to kind of proactively think about what is the, what is the content that's being shared in those spaces? Is it related to someone's money, their ability to move through town or have to take a detour, right, on their way to work or school or a park or things like this? Is it affecting, again, safety, health, right, like liberty, those sorts of things? And to say, like, if these are really important topics to either a specific linguistic community or multiple linguistic communities, you should be thinking about that. And not every project necessarily hits that, that piece, but we do, we do kind of set that baseline. And then a kind of a sister constellation of guidelines for staff about, okay, you've decided that this is really rising to that threshold. How are you going to make sure that you're communicating out with communities? So they know with enough time to act on that information and show up in that space? And are you thinking about just the broader cultural context that we find ourselves in? Will people feel safe at an event? Like, where are you communicating about your event? All of those things to really make sure that as we are making these investments and in those investments in linguistic bridges, that we are setting everyone up for success, both community and staff. So, yeah, but we, we go through those scenarios with staff to make sure they're, they're familiar with those considerations. It's a good question. Laurel?
Do, do we know how many Bend residents have limited English proficiency?
We do, based on federal data. The bulk of our population of folks who have limited English proficiency are Spanish-speaking, at least as far as the data shows. And we also know that because, to someone's wonderful point earlier, we're using Census Bureau categories, that those categories do not reflect indigenous languages. And so there may be true primary languages that could be a language other than Spanish. So we have an estimated, like, eight point four percent of folks living in Bend report that they speak a language other than English at home. And an estimated one, one point one percent of Bend residents are limited English proficient, based on current data.
Yeah, so that's like over a thousand people.
Yeah. And again, I would also note that because for some of the population reporting, the, the linguistic communities are small, there are different margins of error. So that number could be higher. It's a little tough to say. But yeah, we have a significant presence here, I think, that folks don't realize. So thank you for those questions. If it's all right, I'll move us along to just talking a little bit about something that's come up for us a bit already, which is how, how are we determining what's vital? In terms of that vital information and thinking about whether it's proactive translation into Spanish or thinking about, hey, what are some, some topics that might be coming up or we should really be prioritizing and thinking about interpretation for events that we're planning, right? And this does not encompass, like, interpretation in the moment when someone calls or emails or walks into a public space, right? Which we have separate processes for that. But basically, high means, yes, that there, you should definitely be considering translating if you haven't already, if we're talking about a document. And this relates to what we've been discussing. If it's a document that's frequently used by a department day to day, they should be thinking about when are they going to be translating that or have a timeframe for that in the future if they have a number of things already in the queue. Assistance, again, that's connecting with the services and programs that we provide in consent and compliance, we talked a great deal about. Low is generally no, don't, there's no need to translate this because it's not, while the documents are, of course, available by public request, they're not going to be documents that are sitting out on a front desk for our community members to pick up. So these are things like internal memos or SOPs, right? Those sorts of things. And then the medium category is squishier. And I think that gets Ian to your question about events, which depending on department goals and their sense of prioritization, they may choose in, for items that fall in the medium category, to prioritize those and really resource with potentially multiple interpreters or to translate ahead of time. Or they may say, this feels more like a nice-to-have, but it's not a need-to-have. And a classic example is like a recreational tour of a facility that's more for general education or like looking behind the scenes at what a organization does, but it's not required, right? So for us, it might be a hike of the watershed that would be nice to, to have, but like have an interpretation, interpreter for, for example. But it's not as vital as knowing that our water is safe to drink. So, again, there's some, some flex in the system. And again, it's up to departments as the true subject matter experts in their areas of what, what they provide for community in terms of services to decide, you know, where we're going to spend our resources for translating and interpreting. So just wanted to bring that up because, again, that I think helps everyone in community understand how we're using our finite resources for this wisely and well and how we're prioritizing out, you know, what those documents are because we want them to be useful and useful ideally for a long time or high impact in the moment, so.
And this is Ian again. That's really good to hear because those are, a lot of times, the conversations we're having at the Park District. So if I'm having an open house for a park project that I'm managing, it's that I'm working with our community relations team and our outreach team to figure out, like, who are we expecting to come and like what materials do we want to have on hand or, you know, interpreters on hand? And so, yeah, just kind of going through, through that process at every step of the way.
Yeah, that's, that's great to hear. And I feel like that's a lot of the guidance that we'll offer staff from just the, this programmatic perspective internally of make sure you're utilizing your partners in communications and engagement for those consultations about community considerations and messaging and thinking about how maybe one open house or one document sits really as like a single star in a nebula of information about a project or program? And how can you make sure if you pluck some, one thing out, that it makes sense and context for someone who's maybe encountering it for the first time? Or what adjustments do you need to make? So those are similar conversations that we have because we want, again, those, those resources to be well-used and for folks to have the information they need to take the action that's right for them. Yeah.
Lindsay, this is Derek. I had one question, but if you have more slides, because I think we're running out of time, feel free to go through those and I can, I can pump my question or.
Okay, sounds great. Thanks. This should be, yeah, if we can move ahead, then the last.
Public comment when you guys have time for that.
Let's move forward with the presentation and then we can get you up for comment.
So I just wanted to share a quick recap of what our refresh has looked like. So you can see a few milestones that we've hit here in terms of working through a prioritization workshop to think about programmatically, what resources do staff see, community in their spaces when they are interacting with the city of Bend needing? Or what resources would internally be really helpful? So some of that has bubbled out into working with departments on their own subject matter glossaries so that they have a iterative resource to build on over time and share with interpreters, translators, new staff to continue building this muscle. In addition to finalizing some foundational documents that we've discussed already and implementing staff training and, you know, programmatic support, we're also launching a cross-departmental working group to make sure that we are continuing this conversation internally throughout the year and to have it as an opportunity to troubleshoot and share best practices. And we're finally hoping to roll out a community-facing initiative this year called CAFACITOS to really connect with our Spanish-speaking community members and see, you know, where, where are some downstream opportunities for us to either go back and iterate? Is there awareness of this program? What can we be doing to continue communicating about it and making sure folks are, are empowered to use, use the resources that we've built and the processes that we've refined? So that's basically it for me. I don't want to take too, too much time. But the last slide was basically just wanting to open it up to any additional questions and any thoughts on how you see opportunities to connect or collaborate on this work as we continue making sure the word is, is moving through our community about it.
Lindsay, thank you so much. This is a wealth of information and I think this program is so vital and important. So pat yourself on the back and be proud of the work that you're doing because it really is a massive, a massive undertaking and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Derek, did you have a question?
No, it can wait.
Okay.
Great. All right. We're going to go ahead and move on to the COBAC work plan updates review. It looks like we had the walk-in role and I would love to hear how that went. I'm sorry I wasn't able to make it.
Yeah. Yeah, I did want to address, is it okay to allow public comment at this point? Or we?
From an intellectual standpoint.
In our meeting?
So the time for public comment has come and gone. And so what we can do is I can connect with you on a one-on-one.
Well, they said that I'd be able to share that with whoever's uh listening here, so just wait for that and said sure. So Derek would be the one that uh.
If you are, yeah, if we have two minutes, I I would consider allowing it. If you keep it concise, please. Come on up, introduce yourself, provide your name, please.
All right. I don't know if uh two minutes is enough for me to.
Well, that's what you have.
Communicate. Uh, well, I'm Scott Nelson. Uh, I'm a citizen of this community, Bend, Oregon. Um, aside from the point, uh, an often overlooked dimension of geo geopolitical influence is linguistic policy in the context of the alleged South American takeover of Bend, Oregon. The introduction of foreign language assistance, particularly Spanish or Portuguese in state documents, public services and educational systems may appear as a benevolent inclusive gesture. However, when paired with unchecked foreign influence and a lack of local auditing, this shift becomes a subtle but powerful mechanism of cultural displacement. Language is more than communication. It is the vessel of cultural memory, legal precedent and national unity. English as the primary language of the United States is not merely convenience. It is the operating system of its laws, institutions and historical narrative. To dilute the primacy of English in public life under the guise of accessibility is in this context, to disempower the citizens who have built and sustained those institutions for generations. Introducing official foreign language channels in a town under foreign economic or criminal influence creates a parallel society, one where communication, coordination, even political activity can take place outside the view and understanding of English-only citizens. This is not inclusion, it is division. The disempowerment of English-only population. When services, government, functions, and even job markets begin favoring bilingualism with foreign languages tied to powerful external actors. The native English-speaking population becomes a linguistic underclass in their own country.
One minute remaining?
They lose access not just to services but to influence. They cannot understand what is being negotiated, demanded, or coordinated in other languages. This produces alienation, economic stagnation, and civil withdrawal. In such a scenario, English-speaking citizens of Bend may find themselves excluded from critical conversations in city council meetings and court, courtroom proceedings or in local business negotiations, simply because those with foreign language fluency hold the informational keys. This silent marginalization degrades the very meaning of citizenship. Only linguistic preference shifts towards foreign populations that are economically or politically empowered. Through unmonitored influence, the incentive structure changes. Political candidates may begin campaigning in other languages, targeting votes from organized around a non-English identity. Government agencies may prioritize funding or hiring based on bilingual skills rather than merit. Schools may.
Thank you, Scott. We're gonna have to wrap up and move along. If you'd like to email um your comments in full, we'd be happy to share them with the total of the COBAC committee.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Here we go. Uh.
I am homeless and I know the city of Bend has been using uh South American people to uh come up through caravans and uh illegal immigrants.
Scott, I might ask again, just if there's any comments you'd like to share, I'm more than happy to share them with the total in an email and uh others can share my contact information if you would like. We're really thankful that you have taken time to share with us, but we do need to move on in the agenda.
That was interesting. Um, so talk about the COBAC walk and roll event that was held um on May eighth. Uh, that was a really good opportunity to um align with CET's initiative. We had an open house event that day to showcase some of the new amenities that we provided at Hawthorne Station, which includes um better accessibility to our facilities and our buses. And um then we did a a walk and roll event through Juniper Park. Thanks, Ian, for leading that portion of the tour down Franklin Avenue to explore some of the infrastructure, talk a little bit about the city of Bend's um street improvement projects in that area, particularly around Franklin and Second Street, and then ended up in at Dogwood, uh where um Councilman Mendez uh gave a a brief talk and we enjoyed some food and beverages.
Awesome.
Yeah. So thanks to everyone who came. Thanks to the city for supporting it, commute options. Um, Kim Curley was there as well. We have a lot of our HOA board members there and our regional public transit advisory committee. So just thanks for everyone. I think we had about from my count, about forty people roughly attending. Um, and it was a a great tour and a and a good turnout. So appreciate the collaboration on this.
Scott?
Carl? I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, cool. Um, so I I just wanted to say a couple of things about that event, like um I was, I was really grateful for the the high turnout and and also thankful to Derek for sort of I don't know, hosting the event in the sense because we, you know, we were, we were based out of the uh Hawthorne Station there, the CET headquarters, but um I wanted to say um one, um, I think that these, one value of these events is in what happens sort of during the informal moments, like when we're just kind of walking around together, having conversations and then uh when we're getting together afterwards, um as we did at at Dogwood. Um, I think that's a valuable time. I think that if we uh were to do this event again, I would want to um plan a little bit more, like in a little bit more detail, where exactly where we're going to stop along the route and where we're not and what we're going to sort of focus on and who's going to talk at each one of our stops so that we have sort of a clear focal point for each of the stops along the tour. Um, and that's it. Thanks.
Go ahead, Whitney.
All right, um, I I agree with, I was gonna say the pros and kind of the opportunities that existed from this event. I think, yes, kind of planning out there. In addition, I think we could be a little bit more strategic. I did like the little scavenger hunt. I think that could be done in a way like in the meeting before and after where there's more of kind of forced interaction between different entities. And I think that can be done in in different, different ways. Um, both before and after, even thinking about like when we go somewhere to meet with like the landing place and how, how well it will be able to like, we'll be able to make sure people are mixing around. So yeah, I think in those casual aspects of being able to talk because one of the things, the feedback I got from one of the participants was like, it's amazing to know so many people are actually involved in accessibility in our community. They really didn't know, working in accessibility, not knowing that there's all these other entities, which is a huge perk of our, of this event. And um to really maximize that, just having more opportunities for those interactions to find out individually what each person did. I thought it was uh great that we all introduced ourselves in the beginning, so that was really good, giving some space and time for that. And um like everyone got to introduce themselves, which was was really good. So that was kind of, that's my feedback and um, yeah. This is Whitney. I don't know if I said my name when I first started talking, so thanks.
Thank you, everyone, for um hosting such an amazing event and um I'm really proud of you guys. Sounds like it was awesome. Um, okay, we're gonna move on to um upcoming events and.
Liz, this is Cassandra. I'm so sorry. I'm just gonna scroll through some of the photos um from the walk and roll, if that's okay, and we can just kind of move them along, but didn't want to miss it. And thanks very much again to Whitney, Carl, Derek, and Ian for your, your work on planning this event. So thanks, Liz, sorry.
Oh, of course. Um, is it okay if we uh scroll through the photos as we're um talking about?
Please do.
Um, so yeah, um let's open up the conversation to talk about welcoming week and um COBAC support of welcoming week and kind of some ideas of how we would like to um show up.
What was the question, chair? Distractions here in council chambers.
Been an interesting meeting. Okay, so um the question is, is uh welcoming week is coming up? And um how, how do we want to show up as COBAC uh for welcoming week? What um what kind of ideas do we have for that event? Um, what are we thinking?
Liz, could you um just give a summary um for a brief summary for, I don't know, those who are new to the committee, um of what welcoming week is and the role that COBAC has um played in it in the past?
Sure, I can um give a very brief. Uh, I attended one welcoming week, I think about two years ago. It's a week-long event that the city holds and there's different um well, event and um sub-events. So I think like um the community college uh holds a couple sessions and um there is like a little um I'm, I might need support in describing this, but um there are several different events along the week to welcome people into our community. Um, and um it uh, it's a great thing. Uh, I had a lot of fun when I um uh had a, had a booth at one of the events. Cassandra might be better at describing what welcoming week is um better than I. So I'll defer to her.
I don't think better than you, Liz, at all. Uh, this is Cassandra. I would just supplement that information by saying that Bend, uh, the city of Bend is uh what is designated as a welcoming city, so meaning that we are inclusive during this one specific week that's identified by the larger uh organization of Welcoming America. Um, and they do a fantastic job of kind of coordinating at at the national level, but each city um or jurisdiction is uh able to kind of plan their own uh welcoming events as it will. And so the city's always been really active in this. And sometimes even last year, I think we even did like maybe two and a half weeks. It was just such joyous festivities for an extended amount of time. I think we're trying to rein in it a little bit this year. But there is a possibility that's on the floor for COBAC members if we'd like to think about potentially planning an event that would coincide with the welcoming week, which is gonna be, I think it's the second week of September, but I'm not positive if that's, if that's truly um accurate. But especially given the climate of where we are, um really reiterating the importance of uh of the welcomingness, the inclusion, the belonging within our city, um and what we can do specifically from an accessibility lens um in continuing to to create that foundation in community.
Okay, Sandra, can you, do we have dates yet for when welcoming week will be this year?
I'm looking at the site right now. This is Liz online and it's September twelfth through twenty-first.
And this is Stephanie. Can I just, um, I was not able to attend welcoming week last year. Um, and it was um I think my first year on COBAC. So can I, can, would it be possible to find out what role COBAC or what, what we did last year as kind of a launching off part uh to to figuring out how do we want to get involved this year?
I'm happy to jump in there again. This is Cassandra. So two years ago, Stephanie, um, COBAC and HREC, so the Human Rights and Equity Commission uh jointly had the kickoff, if you will, of welcoming week. So we um had an event that had music and um activities um and food, and we really just had a lot of great conversation. It was held over in the commons, so downtown. Um, and it was a joint collaboration between our two uh equity-focused committees. And so last year, uh, COBAC did not host anything themselves, but a lot of our members did attend different welcoming week um events that happened. Um, and really what's possible for COBAC to do is anything, we could do anything from, I think, you know, really some of the really powerful testimony that Whitney was alluding to from the walk and roll is that there are so many different organizations, nonprofits, uh consultants within, within Central Oregon that work in accessibility, but that might not know each other. So it could be something as simple as, it's not simple, but a mixer, an awareness building of like other um, other folks who are working in accessibility and community. It could be a panel discussion. It could be anything that COBAC is interested in hosting and feels substantively, we would have the capacity to be able to do. So really, um, your creativity is the only limit in this case, potentially funding, but we can talk.
Mm-hmm.
This is Liz. Um, Cassandra, would there be an opportunity for us to collaborate with HREC again?
Um, I I won't answer on behalf of HREC um or Spain Andresa, but I believe that and potentially at a different time, we could hear from him. Um, I think that that would be a fantastic uh potential opportunity and always great, I think, especially given just our past um kind of collaborative and we have those circles, right? Like, how, how do we work together specifically with HREC? This might be a great opportunity um as Agatha came to HREC or to COBAC last month and Liz, you so graciously attended HREC uh the month as well. So it could be a great opportunity to have that kind of collaboration between the two groups.
This is Lisa. I just want to note that we're running behind and I don't know if you want to table some things for next meeting or?
I think that might be a good idea. Um.
Do ten right now.
Yeah, we can talk about the uh lunch and learn um at our next meeting. And we'll just table the welcoming week for now. Um, sounds like uh there could be more discussion between COBAC and HREC. Um, I really like that idea of collaboration again and um see where that goes. So we'll just move on to um item number seven, COBAC support letters. Um I did not get a chance to review either one of these edits. Um, but anybody who has is welcome to um to speak up and um you know, provide feedback.
This is Lisa again. I have sent the people that are online the um, these two letters just during the meeting, so they can read them if they.
Sounds great.
Um, Liz?
Yeah. I should volunteer to be a, you know, an editor of anything we wanna put up. I did notice there's some repetition in the Route twelve uh request. Um, and I put it in a oh, here it is. Am I finding it? No, I put it in a Google Doc for myself. Um uh, there it is. I found it. Um, so like literally, really literally, uh, there, in the third paragraph that starts as an advisory body, uh, the second sentence uh starts with restoring uh restoring this route, something like that. And then that's repeated in the next paragraph, almost verbatim. So I still think there's a little cleanup on this letter and we can try to work through it in a very limited amount of time here. Or I can um share edits. Um, and that, what, what would, what would be the best way to do?
And again, um, Cassandra, do you think it would be okay if um if uh COBAC members are able to review the digital copies and then provide you feedback? Um
I, I think, I think that we could do that. I don't, um, do you want to go? If there are other COBAC members that have kind of substantive changes and maybe we could stay in order of what's on the screen of just the on-leash advocacy by Aaron and um and with support from Ian, um, are there any um, are there any changes I would ask from anyone or edits that would like to be made for that particular letter? And then we can move on to Liz's um thoughts on, on that because if there's not very many edits that anyone substantively has, I think we could vote on at least the on-leash. And if there are more edits, then we're able to vote on for um uh Andrew's letter, we could do that too. So uh open to see where, gauge where uh COBAC members level of edits are at at this point.
This is Derek. I mean, I think we could, we could wordsmith these things to death. I think it reads fine as is, both letters, and I'd be happy to move these forward. I know time is of the essence in getting these. I know time is of the essence in getting these out. I don't see anything grammatically that is wrong. So I mean, just the fact that we're, the word restoring is using twice, it's used in a different.
No, 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 it's it's like, it's a whole long sentence or two sentences. I'm, I, you know, it's. The gist is there, if you, but I would, I would love to save people's time parsing out, you know, what we're trying to say. And it would not change, the edits that I'm talking about would not change the the meaning or anything like that. It's just really eliminating about forty extra repeated words between.
And this is this is Cassandra. That could certainly be a motion that's heard for the for the next letter. But I think, again, I just come back to the point of if we're staying with kind of the idea of potentially that On Leash, if there's any other edits, could you have a call for any edits of that? We can move to that and then move on to Liz's, potentially the motion for those edits that Liz is proposing.
All right. This is Liz Woodfin. Do I have a motion to pass the On Leash Advocacy Letter authored by Aaron Rivers and Ian Isaacson?
This is Andrew speaking online. I'll motion to pass the On Leash Advocacy Letter.
Liz Dieter Martin, I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, let On Leash Advocacy Letter passes by unanimous vote. Okay, let's go ahead and touch on this next letter really quickly and decide what we want to do.
Yeah, and this is Derek. My apologies. I didn't read the second page where the, I was just, I thought it was just all on one page. I was like, I don't really see a replication of that, but it's, I see it now. It's on the second page, so I I get what you're pointing out now.
Okay. So would it be for us to to maybe vote to push this off until next meeting to finalize? Would that be okay?
I I'm happy to modify my time as the update for what I have. What I will say is if, in addition to Liz's edit, if there are any other edits that are proposed by COBAC members to now speak into that. And then Andrew, depending on your level of comfort with the edit that Liz has proposed, we could move forward with a motion to include the edits that Liz would have in addition to any potential COBAC members. If there are too many edits, I think Chair Woodfin, your suggestion of moving on to the next meeting is appropriate, but just would like to gauge the totality of the committee members.
Understood. Do we have any other updates or edits that we'd like to make to this letter other than Liz Dieter Martin's suggestion? Calling once. Calling twice. Okay, I'm going to move that we approve this letter based on the corrections that Liz Dieter Martin will have to the letter to reduce redundancy.
And and to see whether or not, Andrew, you feel comfortable with that as the author with those edits that would be incorporated. And Liz, feel free to, again, for the record, just kind of reflect what that would be. Sorry, and this is Sandra.
Andrew, do you have any thoughts before we before I repeat that again?
Andrew speaking. No, that's fine. I think any edits to to reduce redundancies is fine with me. I've been told by many people that I can be kind of verbose, so I, yeah, that that wouldn't be a problem.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, motion to move forward the transportation letter authored by Andrew with the edits that Liz Dieter Martin has. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Amanda, I'll motion to approve that, the letter, Andrew's letter.
This is Stephanie. I'll second.
Okay, great. All in favor? Aye. Okay, awesome. Two letters approved.
For the record, I'll abstain from this since it's directly relevant to my work and a potential conflict of interest.
Understood.
This is Derek.
Lisa, do we have that captured?
I'm sorry?
We have that captured that Derek is abstaining from the vote?
I've written it down.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move forward to the COBAC Roundtable. I know that there's a handful of things that we discussed in leadership that we wanted to highlight. Considering time restraints, I'm gonna go ahead and I will send a note to Cassandra to disseminate out on some of the thoughts that I had for Roundtable. Anybody else would like to share?
Yeah, I just have a quick note that I'll I'll want to expand on in a future meeting, but Oregon State University is in the very early or Cascade's campus here is in the very early, early processes of developing a second residence hall. And they have shared some of their preliminary like architectural designs and plans with some students, including myself. But I have a lot of concerns about it because the building, as it exists, proposed, has very, very, very many accessibility and fire hazard issues. In addition to them not having anyone with accessibility background on the designer review committee. So I just wanted to bring that to COBAC's attention and see if the group would be interested in exploring that at a future meeting.
Thank you, Andrew. This is Liz Woodfin again. I think that we can possibly move that on to agenda planning for for the next meetings. I think that's a.
Understood. Thanks.
Okay, I'm gonna turn this over to Isaac or Ian Isaacson to talk about the Miller's Landing update. Thank you.
Yep, so this is Ian speaking, and on the screen, we should have some photos coming up here. You can go ahead, Cassandra, to the next slide. We are wrapping up construction on the Miller's Landing River Access and Habitat Restoration Project. Just just kind of a brief history on this. This is a location where a boardwalk existed previously in one of the locations, and then a user-created access point was the other. Sedimentation, erosion, safety and accessibility were all issues with these access points. And three years ago, we started this design project, and COBAC was a signatory on some of the letters of support that we got for some of the grant funding. Just for context, to kind of show how supportive the community as as a whole was of this project, construction's gonna come in right around $1.2 million, and 100% of that funding was covered through various grants and a private donation. You know, projects like these are extremely complicated. Anytime you work in the river, adding accessible components like what we're doing here at Miller's adds even more complexity, and complexity usually means additional funding. And so this is truly a community-wide effort to bring this project to fruition. So just real quick, what we're looking at here, you'll recognize some of the grouted boulder terracing there along the front. There are stairs with with handrails. Those are all the grades coming down off of the Deshute River Trail there in the background to the river are fully ADA compliant. And then what makes this access point specifically, this is access point one we're looking at right now. What makes this different than anything else that we've ever done here at the Park District? And different than anything we've been able to find really in North America is the the three fully accessible watercraft launches there on the left side of the screen. And you go to the next slide, Cassandra. So a real quick, the 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 furthest left launch there that's dry is what I've coined as the zero-entry launch. And that actually will get folks below the surface of the water. And when you get down to the end of the ramp there, there's there's a transfer staircase or a transfer bench that you, if you're in a chair, for example, transfer onto and puts you directly at water level on the other side, whether you're just getting in to go swimming or waiting, or if you're getting onto a watercraft. And that's actually a concept that we've seen used for community pools, but in a river setting like this, this is, we have not seen that anywhere else. The middle launch there is is more of what you could describe as a traditional boat launch, just a steady grade going down into the water. We did this for for folks who need assistance getting in and out of their watercraft. So in addition to having the the gentle slope going into the water, the width of this one provides the opportunity for friends, family, helpers to to help somebody get in and out of their watercraft, launch and go recreate on the water. And then the third and final there at the top of the screen is the a roller launch. And that launch, this is mid-construction, so there's some additional features that are still yet to be installed. Will include a fully accessible ADA transfer bench. There's a shade sail now that goes over that to shade the area for for folks to keep the heat down when they're transferring and to keep their mobility devices cool in the hottest part of the summer day. And then those rollers are going to allow people to enter and exit the water regardless of the the water elevation. Because as we all know, the Deschutes fluctuates from spring to summer flows, summer to winter flows, I should say. And here in Bend, folks like to recreate year-round. And so that roller launch is going to give a whole bunch of different people the ability to get transfer onto their watercraft and get in and out of the water regardless of the water elevation itself. And we go to the next slide. And this is just another angle looking at it. Again, you can see some of the handrails. We worked with Ashley Schaper at Empowering in Access, who is a consultant with lived experiences in a chair. And so she's been vital in this process. We didn't want a project that just checked boxes of accessibility. We wanted this to be as functional for as many folks as possible and trying to provide as many different options for people to use, understanding that people are going to use each of the features differently, and they're intended to be used that way. So. And then next slide. And then this is the second access point just downstream. This is a much quote-unquote lighter touch, where the the river itself is is a little different dynamically. And so this is just, again, you see some some transfer steps there on the left hand of the screen, a small little ramp that'll get folks down into the water at ADA grades, and then just kind of a more of a lounging and hanging out space. And go to the next slide. And then a big part of this project, while the, you know, accessible recreation was was a huge driver, the ecological uplift and habitat restoration work on this project and other river access projects are huge. The clearest example here is that ponderosa tree there on the the left side of the the photo. The riverbank prior to construction was completely undercutting that tree. And so a big part of this project, in addition to providing access for for recreators, is enhancing and protecting adjacent habitat. So that includes building out that bank there, planting native vegetation and installing fence along some of those riparian areas to help protect them from from getting loved to death, essentially. And I think that might be the last photo. Yeah. That's, so yeah, and that's opening in June, so right around the corner.
This is Liz. I am so impressed. It's so amazing.
Thank you.
Great job, great work. I did have a question. What does parking look like around those areas?
Yep, so Miller's Landing has a an off-street parking lot in it. Currently, there's one ADA space striped. We're gonna be striping a second ADA space for the opening of this. And then we're gonna monitor the use patterns over this first summer. Parking outside of Miller's Landing, the lot itself on street is is restricted. There's a time limit on that. And like anywhere in town, when when it's hot and sunny and anything along the river, you couldn't build enough parking. So this first, this first year, we're gonna, it's gonna be a analyze how that use pattern works out. Yeah.
Very cool. Any questions for Ian?
This is Derek. Maybe our next event could be a walk, roll and paddle.
There you go.
Landing in the summer.
Liz, Carl, thank you so much. Ian, this, I can't wait to use this thing. It's gonna be awesome.
This is Lisa. I just want to know, we have three minutes, and I just want to make sure that you all are agreeing to table the trauma care training. Okay.
Sorry, I couldn't hear that online.
I just wanted to make sure that you guys all agree on tabling the trauma care training for next month. Put it on next month's agenda.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Thank you.
I thought you meant having a table somewhere. I didn't know where that was. Okay.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the Accessibility and Equity Manager update. Cassandra, take it over.
Thank you, Liz. Just want to thank you all for your patience during this meeting and different situations. Just appreciate that. We'd like to follow up with you all via email and just check in. Just please expect that to be on the way. I just wanted to call out and bring attention to thank you both Carl and Aaron for agreeing to sign up for an additional term on COBAC. So hooray for that. Some positive news there. Also, Ian, thank you for the phenomenal update of the photos, the work, and it's so cool to see kind of COBAC's interaction with this process. And then now to have you appointed as a member of the committee and getting so many great updates and providing that. Just really, really grateful for so many of you on the committee. I will also send an email out with the next steps for our scheduling of this June meeting. Depending on the attendance, it may be noticed. It may be open to the public. We'll see how many folks are interested in joining. Wanted to let you know that Counselor Mendez is unable to make today's meeting. There is a quick statement he had wanted to be shared. Apologize for not being in attendance. This is the last conflict I anticipate for the near future. I wanted to call your attention to the budget that the Budget Committee recommended to counsel. The city's budget has increased funding to remove barriers to mobility in two areas. The first, about a 30% increase to $1.3 million in the Accessibility Construction Fund. And the second increases to the Transportation and Mobility Department's Accessibility Program, largely from Phase Two of the Transportation Utility Fee. Very sorry to miss today's meeting. Thank you, Counselor Mendez. We'll see you at the next one. And with that, Chair Woodfin, I send it back to you.
All right. Do we have any agenda items that we'd like to cover for next month's meeting?
This is Andrew speaking. Just my brief agenda item that I had inadvertently mentioned during Roundtable.
Okay.
Yeah, and this is Derek. I'd like to talk, if we wanted to talk about Cascades Transit and the reintroduction of fairs and how our agency is going to be working collaboratively with organizations across the region to support people with disabilities, low-income individuals with discounted fares in in that process. I'd like to maybe just do a quick overview of that.
That would be great. Thank you, Vice Chair. All right, so with that, if we don't have any other calls to agenda items, I will adjourn this meeting at 2:31 PM. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks.